Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council. For those of you I can't quite see, I will try to peer around this camera here. We're going to ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Polapati.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Here.
Mayor Budge.
Here, thank you very much. Let's ask our city attorney, we've been in closed session. So let's ask our city attorney for the report out of closed session.
Thank you very much, council members of the community and staff. This evening, the city council met in closed session at 4:30 and took up one item of anticipated litigation, received updates from and provided direction to litigation counsel and took no other action.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Stacy, do you have contact information that you need to read again?
I can read that for the public comment.
Sure.
Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the, oh, I'm sorry, you meant for the Metro Cable.
Yeah. Metro Cable and Zoom schedule and that kind of thing.
Yes, I will do that. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays on Thursday, January 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, January 20th at 6:00 p.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to rise for the pledge of allegiance and invite you to stay standing for an invocation by Tammy Harriman with the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy of Sacramento. And I'm going to ask our colleague Ken Cooley if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, Tammy, you're with us tonight, how lovely.
Thank you. Join me. Blessed God, may you get all the glory on this day for the hand at work. Anoint the creativity, the ideas, the energy so that even the smallest task set before us brings you the honor. May all the work and service we do and the way we do it bless you and all those we do it for. Bless this council and the community they serve with wisdom, discernment, commitment, courage, and strength, with all these things to be rooted in your unbiased love and attention. May all who are present be blessed, touched with your presence of peace and guidance. Amen.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Well, we have a presentation tonight to somebody who is extremely deserving. I'm going to ask Ken and Sidney to join me at the front.
Recording stopped.
Well, if there were ever a person who deserved recognition for his work for the city of Rancho Cordova, it has to be Ken Cooley. And it's a pleasure to see you tonight, Sidney. So we're honoring our retiring Assembly Member Ken Cooley for his dedication to Rancho Cordova the 17th of January. And whereas Ken Cooley has served the city of Rancho Cordova for over 20 years as both an Assembly Member for 10 years from 2012 to 2022 and prior to that as a Rancho Cordova City Council member for 10 years from 2002 to 2012. And whereas during Ken's tenure in the California State Assembly, he was a strong champion for the residents, the businesses, and the organizations in the city of Rancho Cordova, focusing on job creation, protecting the community, and supporting Rancho Cordova's infrastructure. And whereas despite the size of Ken's Assembly District, which encompass eastern Sacramento County, Ken made it his priority to attend and engage in Rancho Cordova events and important issues affecting Rancho Cordovans. And I know I'm probably not the only one who has had Ken show up for a Boy Scout meeting or an Eagle Scout Award, or he has been so dedicated to the kids of Rancho Cordova. And whereas both as a Rancho Cordova City Council member and as an Assembly Member, Ken was an important supporter of Mather Veterans Village, our home for 150 homeless and disabled veterans in the city. And whereas Ken has written many letters of support for the infrastructure projects in Rancho Cordova, helping the city acquire grant funding that made integral projects such as the Folsom Boulevard Rehab Project and the White Rock Road Improvements Project possible. And whereas Ken has been one of the hardest working elected officials, representing his constituents in numerous ways, including on the State Seismic Commission, Safety Commission as Chair of the Select Committee on foster care, and on both the Council of State Governments West and the League of California Cities. And whereas Ken's commitment to the city of Rancho Cordova runs deep and that in addition to his public service, he and his wife Sidney and their families have been Rancho Cordova residents for over 40 years, raising their family here and greatly contributing to the betterment of the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Rancho Cordova is honored to have worked with retired Assembly Member Ken Cooley and expresses its sincere appreciation to him for his service, his dedication, and his high standards and his deep and genuine desire to serve the residents of the city of Rancho Cordova. And so we want to present this to you, Ken.
Thank you very much.
And of all the people who are deserving, we want to present you with a key to the city.
Excellent, excellent. Oh, man.
This is our brand new key to the city. And I always tell people that it will open whatever bathroom door you can find. But congratulations. Everybody knows Ken's service to this community is long and it's varied and they have lived a life of service to the community that we all expect is not going to stop at this point. So we wish you well in whatever you all choose to do, including kayaking and biking.
Thank you very much. Thank you all so very much. And a little quip I am compelled to make, several times since you've been here, we've been discussing kayaking. And Sidney and I love to kayak on the American River. And so the lore of City Hall is that Sidney's quite definite that the kayaker that appears on the city logo is actually her because she's above water. She accuses me of flipping the boat. It would be in the drink if it was me. Well, what a great honor, what a great honor to have served together. What an epic time here in Rancho Cordova. And I can't thank you enough, it is just a very great honor. And that new, that's a beautiful key to the city. I'm going to find any number of restrooms to use that on. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, their service, Ken even has been the kayak leg on our, at these great race team. He's done all sorts of things for Rancho Cordova. So we need a group picture, so if we can have a group. Micah, Adam, you want to join our group?
Very good. Ken, before you walk away. But for those of you who don't know, when I first got elected to office in 2008, I made a point to have Ken, who I believe at the time was Vice Mayor of Rancho Cordova, swing me in at the Sac City School Board. And upon getting elected to this office to succeed him at City Hall, I asked him to administer my oath again. I think for most of my oaths over the years until my wife was able to make a couple of them, Ken administered all of those. And the reason I did it when I was on the school board was to remind that school district that we were, that Rancho Cordova was a part of that community. And Ken, your leadership, whether it was during that time when you were on the council and I was on the school board, or the last 10 years that you served us in the State Assembly, I have learned so much from you. And I honestly would not be sitting here, and I wouldn't have been sitting at the school board without your leadership, your mentorship, and your friendship. And so thank you for everything that you've done for our community. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight, but again, thank you so much for everything that you've done for me, my family, and our city and our region. Thank you.
David, did you have comments?
I do. And Ken, I want to apologize for not being there. I have caught something, not COVID, but got a temperature I'm not feeling. So I really wanted to be there tonight to thank you for your service to Rancho Cordova. And it's been such an honor serving with you these past 20 years now, just over 20 years, I guess, if we just sort of shove it all together, because that's really how I view it. You moved on to something else. We can argue whether that was higher or lower office, but that's a separate debate. It's something you had a passion for and we are very, very thankful that you carried on and did that and represented Rancho Cordova so well in the Assembly. And of course, we're also thankful for everything you did for this community while you were a City Council member with Linda and I and the rest of the crew here. So thank you, congratulations on a really incredible career. I am looking forward, though, to the next chapter of that career. I assume you've got plans locally, I hope. We are always looking for, you know, inspired leaders with a lot of knowledge who can help take us to the next level, something you talked about a lot when you were occupying one of those chairs up there at this particular dais. And I look forward to being around you a little more while you take that next step.
Thank you, David. It's a great honor to serve with you. And of course, I honor you for your role now in the National League of Cities. Little old Rancho Cordova, we've cast a long shadow on all kinds of good governance organizations around the country. And, you know, I did what I did for a long time, but what perseverance you've shown at the National League of Cities, that's, you know, thousands of cities to rise to leadership there, that took some staying power. So it's a great accomplishment. And the scientific method, I'm sure, just staying on the details and keeping track of everything, moving it along. But yeah, it's a great honor to be here, to be in this place. Of course, David, Linda, and I, we were the ones that built this very room. I enjoyed coming here to my City Hall on the back wall, bringing everyone in on November 9th, 2005 to, you know, we forget, but underneath the carpet on the walls, message to the future, English, Spanish, and Russian, because that reflected the character of our community then, the character of our community now. And the public owned the room before we ever did as elected officials. So it's just so great to be here. I thank you very much for being honored in this way. It is service, it is public service, and we've been blessed with so many exemplars. Don Natoli's signature's on this back wall, Ditto Cyrus' signature's on the back wall with you, Linda and David. So, very good. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ken.
All right. Good night.
Okay, we're going to move into public comment. And citizens wishing to address the board on matters that are not on the agenda have the opportunity to do so at this point. We'll all remember that we can't take action on an item that is not on the agenda, but we'd be happy to connect people with staff or schedule something on a future agenda as need be. And we'd ask everyone to take three minutes. Stacy, do we have people signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do. So we'll start with those who are in the room and have submitted a speaker card. We'll start with Tara Colvinbach. Following Tara will be Carl Salmanson. And then following Carl will be James Garcia. Tara.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Staff, I am Tara Colvinbach. I'm a resident of Stone Creek. I just want to let you know, and I think you guys know this, but I am not related to anyone on the City Council or City Staff. I have no vested interest in any of the businesses seeking to build in Rancho Cordova. I volunteer. I care about our city. I do not like people who lie and mislead or others, and that is why I'm speaking out. I am very concerned that the actions of a small group of residents who are spreading incorrect information to rile up other residents before the developers could even present their proposal to residents. They even admitted this to the developer, that they spread this information to get more people to attend. I understand residents are concerned about the negative consequences of these businesses, but providing incorrect information to them is hurting everyone. Warehouses don't have tons of trucks coming through every day. That would not even make sense. I worked in warehouses. From our, for our nonprofit, we also sit for hours in industrial complexes trying to trap stray cats for spay neuter. We may see a few big trucks a month, a week, whatever, and mostly UPS trucks. These are the facts as I see them. We in Stone Creek were all provided a disclosure when we bought our properties that this land would be used for commercial development, especially on the flight line where the approved uses are much narrower in scope. Commercial for sale signs have been out there for nearly 20 years. So we all knew that was not going to be a nature preserve, okay? City Staff and City Attorney, the City Attorney, were painstakingly, hand in hand, to ensure all proposals meet established codes and approved uses. I have seen them work over time. Each proposal takes several meetings to go through the process. This small group of residents has not seen this. They never showed up before, never cared before. All of the plans and approved uses have been explained and documents provided to this group, but they still want to, quote, "review more documents," unquote. Our City Attorney told residents of Stone Creek that stalling these developments for no just cause would end in possible lawsuits against the city. My concern is that all residents of our city should not have their hard-earned tax dollars used for settling lawsuits for Stone Creek. These developers came to us in good faith to develop the properties and provide needed small businesses, especially light industrial, which is 99% full now.
It's pretty generic.
Our tax dollars should go to our children, to the arts and music programs, to help improve our roads and infrastructure and for safety.
Please wrap up your comments.
These dollars should not be used to settle lawsuits that could have been prevented. I urge you not to hold up approval of the business plans for Stone Creek. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tara. Next speaker is Carl.
Hello, I'm Carl Salmanson. I'm a resident in the Tiffany West neighborhood in Rancho Cordova. And interestingly enough, I'm coming to talk about a similar topic, a development topic. First of all, I want to thank you all for letting me come here and speak. I want to congratulate Micah for your promotion. I will be the first to say, when I read the, in, search was internal, I was very upset. But then I also had discussions with friends of mine. I said, I know a bunch of people in the city and they're all very capable and qualified. And I think we've got somebody capable and qualified. Ken, thank you. He's left the room, but Ken has been a very influential person around our community. I've seen him do some speaks, some speeches, and one of the things he talked about was bringing things from the concept of improbable to, from impossible to improbable to possible. And I thought it really resonated with what happens in communities and in government. So I'm here to talk about a development project near my home, the Cassis property. I had a bunch of points I was going to talk about. I'm just going to kind of hit these things really quickly and really a story about this property. This is a very old historic piece of property in our community, going back to Alexander Leisdorf and before that with the Neesonan people. I can picture on the bluff where I live, the Neesonan villages overlooking their salmon drying stations along the river, because they lived high above the bluff. So we've got a project that's proposed here now, the second proposal. Unfortunately, it's now under SB 330, and I think that removes some of our control in Rancho Cordova. I'm here to implore the city to try to slow this in any fashion they can. I see the Folsom Boulevard specific plan as the original mistake in the reclassification of this property in the floodway on the river as mixed-use residential. And within the Folsom Boulevard specific plan, it actually states we will not violate state or federal laws with this plan. Well, state law states that we will not build in the floodways. So this property, for people that don't know, there's two sections. One of them is right along Folsom Boulevard, should be filled in, should be developed, should be part of our local landscape. The other is right on the American River. It's across from William Pond. It is within the floodway. It has directly across from it one of the, the only blue heron and egret rookery on the river. It has swans and hawks. It has multiple endangered species, and it's in the floodway. So I'm just here to implore you that we can try to do what we can. There's lots of solutions for this piece of property. We don't want to stop the development along Folsom Boulevard. We think that needs to be done. I will follow up with a letter. I have a whole host of specific points related to California law, related to the specific plan. And I think that there's a lot of things we could do more positive than this planned, develop big houses on the river. I don't think there's a single person I know anywhere within 100 miles of me that wants to see houses.
Please wrap up your comments.
On that river, on that river stretch. And so that was it. Just wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come talk about it. I will follow up with a letter to all of you. And keep up the good work.
Thank you, Carl. James?
Hello, I'm James Garcia, a member of the Stone Creek neighborhood. And part of that, I guess, riled up a neighborhood group, but it's actually a large group. We're over 200 people strong who actually are requesting a lot of public records to get the truth to the matter of all these projects. So that's one. But really, I'm here to talk about, in fact, that with this awesome weather we've had, kind of replenish all our waterways, we've generated a lot more potholes throughout the whole city and just kind of wanted to make sure that the city is gonna look at that with the Public Works Department, especially along our potential future trucking highway called Zimfandel and, well, as other locations. So just kind of wanted to see what we can do about that since this weather causes ruckus all over the city, not just on Zimfandel. So please take a look with Public Works. Is there a way that we can spread out in like the newsletter that is available? Because I do sign up for all of those notifications that, hey, here's how you can reach out to Public Works for reporting potholes or anything else out there. So, thank you.
Thank you, James.
Mayor, those, all the speaker cards that I have, the city clerk's office did receive a public comment via email that was from Brenda Guston. The emailed public comment has been distributed to the city council. It's been made available to the public in the back of the council chambers and is also on the city's website. I'm looking at Zoom and I do not see any hands that are raised for any additional public comment.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Then we'll go into our own council reports. Donald, we're going to call on you first.
Yep. Nothing related to report considering the amount of work we have to do tonight. I'll go ahead and forego my report.
Then Garrett.
Really quick, met with, thank you for the invite to the Talagoo Association of Greater Sacramento. That was great. Had an Alf meeting, which is an American Leadership Forum. Saw many swearing-ins, including Tian Ho and Pat Hume and a bunch of good energy going on there. Congratulations to Crossover Basketball, starting up another successful year of many kids that are in need to have a place. And then I transitioned the Library Commission after long, many negotiations that Sue is going to do it again as Chair. But we have so many new politicians, like eight, that they actually, we got quorum without me having to sit, spend 15 minutes on the phone, calling everyone, begging them to get on Zoom, that we did have a full session. And so we officially have, I think it's Katie Valenzuela, no. Yeah, Katie Valenzuela is our new Vice Chair and a bunch of people that have been sitting and are really excited about it. So it's a bunch of new energy too, so it's nice to see.
Super. That sounds very positive. Thank you. Siri.
Well, I like to see it's a full house. Thank you for coming in, such a passionate group. Want to say that we attended, most of us attended Cyrus' city manager's retirement. He was a tireless, dedicated public servant who spent a lot of time trying to get, improve the city and residents and businesses. I also attended the Talagoo Association of Greater Sacramento along with Councilmember Garrett. They were celebrating their 20th anniversary celebrations. So I asked them also to attend our 20th anniversary celebrations, the city of Rancho Cordova, and we're going to do a great job of that. And also, I, along with Chamber President Diane Rogers, attended the opening of an Indian store on Sunrise Boulevard. So if anybody's looking for more spices or to spice up, there's a new Indian store on Sunrise Boulevard. Thank you.
Interesting. David.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to apologize to my colleagues and the public for not being there tonight. I really, really, really would have preferred to do that. Unfortunately, I am somewhat ill. If you see me disappear during this meeting, that might be why. I think I have a clear mind, but I am not of clear body today. I don't, I'm, I have a temperature, I may be infectious, so I'm not, not going to enter the room. But that is unfortunate.
We appreciate the fact that you stayed.
And I apologize for that, particularly on a night like tonight with, with the big issue, it's better to be there. So I also attended the Pat Hume swearing-in. That was a great event down at the county, certainly a very historic event. Don Natoli did unbelievable service for this community over decades, and he has, he's earned, he's earned a well-deserved, I guess, retirement at this point. I participated in NLC Housing Supply webinar last week. I became Chair of the Regional Sand District, the Sac Shore District as well. Those are sort of joint agencies. So I'm their Board Chair for the next year. Participated in some Cal OES calls last week that were organized by the League of California Cities and was honored to be a Speaker at Cyrus' event. So I think the one takeaway I want to give everybody from that event, it was not really just about Cyrus, that event. What I was reminded of, and I think my colleagues will probably agree in this, is that sort of captured a spirit of our community in that room. When you looked at Cyrus' career in Public Works here in the city of Rancho Cordova and as our city manager, it hearkened us back to the early days when we had a real, like, coherent spirit of organization and focus. And I think what I've left feeling that night was that we need to try to recapture some of that organizational spirit and some of that community spirit by having more of those sorts of events. We used to do a great deal of them, certainly early on in our, in our existence as a city, and that sort of waned, definitely during pandemic, squelched it. We, as a council, have already talked about doing more retreats, more in-depth work sessions, things like that, now that we're, we're back from the pandemic. But I think another element of that is the social gathering. So the extent we can heighten those in partnership with the community council or, or any other organization, frankly, I think that would be a very good thing for us as a city to maintain our forward momentum, get as many voices into the process as possible, and share as much information as possible outside of this sort of... and share as much information as possible outside of this sort of formal setting that we, that we normally find ourselves in. So that was a great event, and congratulations to Cyrus for incredible service to the city. But I think there was an even bigger takeaway, that there are some big missions for this community, and we need everybody pulling in the same direction as much as possible. So thank you for that, for allowing that report.
Thank you, David. So I would agree with what everybody said about the retirement party for Don Matoli and the retirement party for Cyrus Abbar. When I, when I first walked into Don's party, the first thing I saw was like 36 people who used to work in county planning and, and Public Works. And it's all these people who've worked for Don over time, who just like city staff here coming to Cyrus's party, all really respect the people they worked for. And that is an amazing testament to a person's public career. And they both deserve it, or so deserve it of it. I did watch the swearing in for Pat Hume on TV, and that was equally fun. They, everybody made a fairly lengthy speech. Siri and I attended the Sacramento Association of Realtors annual luncheon where they promoted their, their new president and found a couple of issues for the Board of Realtors that we probably need to take some action on here. And this is a season for, actually, another news, event that I get to attend as mayor is a very obscure committee called the Criminal Justice Committee. But they talked about some really interesting things. First of all, the fact that because of the flooding, the, all of the inmates, 1,000 inmates over at R triple C, Rioque Sumner's Correctional Center, all had to be evacuated. So what do you do with 1,000 people who all need to be incarcerated? So apparently, everybody from probation to the city of Folsom took some of the inmates and are keeping them until the, it's safe to go back to down on Bruceville Road. They are planning, they are working on a new courthouse downtown to alleviate the huge backlog, apparently, that they have. And, and one of the things that's very positive that they are working to build is a 16-bed and 27-seat complex for youth with mental health problems over at the Bradshaw, the county's Bradshaw complex. So they're looking for additional ways to serve the young people who have mental health problems. And then a really interesting thing, the city of Sacramento Police Department is using their SEPTED guidelines, which are environmental opportunities to reduce the tendency for criminal activity to occur. And, and actually, Albert, interesting things like streetlights. They're gonna try to put in more streetlights in the city of Sacramento in areas where there have not been any, any before, just in order to help reduce the tendency towards crime. This is also a season for grand openings. And Floor and Decor, if you haven't noticed, is open over in the old Mervyn's and Cole's location. Floor and Decor, I have to give a shout out to those guys, standing there talking to their, their, their store manager, to the design center, to the, the gentleman who runs the installation department, really unique organization. To the extent that if, if they have a problem with installing some particular product at one of their stores, which could be on the East Coast, they tell everybody in all their stores so that if somebody else should be installing that product, then they would be able to take steps to avoid having that same problem. And believe it or not, 7-Eleven, the new 7-Eleven over here at International and Sunrise has a new chicken recipe, a chicken restaurant inside. The chicken, the restaurant's called Raise the Rooster, I think, Raise, or Raise the Roost. But the chicken is really good. So they have been busy supplying chicken to the building department and to the police department, and some of us went over and got free samples the other day, and I encourage you all, they're gonna do their grand opening on Thursday morning. I encourage everybody to go and have chicken with 7-Eleven of all things. So with that, we'll go on to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, a few items tonight. One is just remembering honoring Cyrus was a great event of doing that. It really got me excited about, as we celebrate our 20th year, this year is, what does the next 20 years look like? And really looking forward to that and remembering as, as we honored Cyrus, it wasn't necessarily just all the projects he built, but the people he influenced and the people he was able to lead through, through the different leadership roles that he had. So really appreciated that. The next, and I provided this as my first update the last time, but the storms haven't stopped, it seems, but maybe they have now, but really wanted to, again, say my appreciation to the city teams that have been out there cleaning up streets, taking down trees, working in the community to really 24 hours a day over the last couple of weeks to, to really make the, the community a, a good place to live and, and really clean it up as, as they came in. Just from an overall standpoint, the city of Rancho Cordova fared relatively well from a sense of no major big issues, as you've seen some, from some others. So thank you for the teams and all the prep work that provided that opportunity to be successful in that. And I will say, as Mr. Garcia noted, there are some potholes that I, I'm sure have continued or have started through the rains. And just to let you know that there is a phone number to, to call, or you can use our app to, to report those potholes for those, for those different things that happen. So, and then the last is just to let everybody know that we have opened our grant process for non, area nonprofits in the city of Rancho Cordova. And so that application process is now open, and through the end of the month, we're accepting grants from our nonprofit community for recovery and resiliency moving forward. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you, Micah.
Mayor, if I may add just one more comment about the, the city manager's tribute, I think that it was interesting that there were just an outpouring of regional leaders, and they were really acknowledging Cyrus's accomplishments, but, but praising the council for all that it had, had done with him over the course of his career. And one thing that struck me in addition to celebrating the actual accomplishments was when one, one regional leader said, you have more fun than we do. And, and I do think that, that combination of being able to, to get so much done in a way that also really captivates the community and, and makes people really enjoy themselves and gets more people involved was something to celebrate. And to see your colleagues acknowledging and, and thanking the council for that accomplishment was meaningful.
Super. Thank you, Adam. So with that, we'll move on to our consent calendar items. Items 16.1 through 16.6. And consent calendar items are deemed to be routine and non-controversial and can all be approved with one motion. Does any of the city council members have an item that needs to be pulled from the consent Is there any public comment on any of the items on the consent calendar?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for items on the consent calendar, and I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom.
Super. Okay, then we'll entertain a motion.
I move approval for item 16.1 to 16.6.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Council member Pulipati?
Yes.
Council member Gatewood?
Yes.
Council member Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our consent public hearing items. Stacy, you want to read the 17.1?
Sure. A resolution approving the city of Rancho Cordova's adjusted storm drainage impact fee schedule for 2023.
Did any of the council members have a question of staff? Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask if we have any public comment.
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for this item on the agenda.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing and see if we have a motion.
I move approval of 17.1.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Council member Gatewood?
Yes.
Council member Terry?
Aye.
Council member Pulipati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you. So moving on to our public hearing item, 18.1.
The subject is the Logistics Center at Rancho Cordova, major design review project number
Okay, and we'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Nick Sosa, Associate Planner. Tonight's project is the Logistics Center at Rancho Cordova. Staff will be introducing the project, then handing it over to the applicant to give their, their presentation, who will then hand it back to staff to close out the presentation.
Thank you, Nick.
So let's go ahead and get started. There we go. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is for council to receive a presentation from staff and the project applicant on what has occurred since December 5th, city council meeting. Staff will then ask council to direct staff to return at a later city council meeting with final action documents, or direct applicant to make additional modifications to the proposed Since the December 5th meeting, the applicant has worked with staff to make modifications to address council concerns. These modifications include additional renderings from Queens Arbor and Portico Circle. The applicant has also modified their elevations to provide additional architectural elements that are more consistent with an office appearance. And the applicant has also worked with staff on additional requests that have been received from the community. And I will turn it over to Darcy to talk about some of those requests and how the applicant...
Good evening, Mayor Budge, members of the council, Darcy Galar with the Planning Department. On this slide here, it just kind of recaps a couple additional developer concessions. There were some additional conversations with a few of the community advocates. Staff then went and had conversations with the development team to discuss some additional potential conditions of approval. So on the screen before you, on the left-hand side, what you see are those additional requests that were made to the development team. And on the left, on the right-hand side, what you will see in green are those additional concessions and/or conditions of approval that developer has agreed to on the project. The one item at the bottom in the red is the one that the developer has not agreed to. So just briefly, the first one, limiting hours of operation. So developer's response to that was truck movements into and out of the site around the truck court shall be prohibited between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Requiring a sound wall at the end of Davina Court. The project will pay its fair share of a sound or screen wall at the end of Davina Court and, and any traffic calming measures on Bear Hollow. In terms of no parking on North Mather, a city staff is currently internally working on posting some no parking, no truck parking signs on North Mather. Additional topics that were covered, some of which are already included in building plans that have been submitted at risk by the developer, include solar panels, skylights, bike lockers, EV charging stations. And as you can see on the right, the project as designed does accommodate the majority of these specific asks. So the roof is designed to carry a solar, to carry solar panels. They are providing skylights. There will be bike lockers outside or inside the interior to the project site. What we've found is that bike lockers outside have been, been attracted for homeless housing, so we're seeing more bike racks and internal bike rack, or bike storage. Additionally, EV charging infrastructure is required. And if leased to a user that requires refrigerated trucks, they will have plugins installed at the loading docks. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and turn the presentation over to the applicant team to walk through some changes that they've made, and then they will turn it back to us to conclude the presentation.
Okay, let's ask real quickly if anybody on council has any questions of staff. Okay?
Sorry, I just had one, and the applicant answered this. On the lead certification, is that you don't have it? I remember hearing the last meeting that you were doing something in that regard.
Okay, we'll ask them to address that.
Okay.
Good evening. All right, thank you for hearing us again on this project.
Please share your name.
My name is George Condon. I'm with Dermody Properties.
Thank you.
I'll just jump right into the lead certification. So we do seek lead certification on all of our projects. There's no guarantee that we will get lead certification. It can be quite challenging with industrial buildings, but, but we will apply for it and attempt to obtain it, I guess is the nuance.
Thank you.
Okay. So today I wanted to kind of run through the design of this project from the beginning to where we are today, and then just address a few other issues that we've heard, that we heard in the previous meeting here. So the building you see in front of you is a rendering of the elevation as it is today. The original site plan that we reviewed with staff is here. And just to show how it's evolved, we've included the new site plan now. I will admit, this one looks prettier because it has all of the landscaping on it. But the, the important thing to, important things to note here is that at the back of the building by the truck court, you'll see that the building has just a, a small L shape to it. That's what we call a pop-out. Tenants can use these things. They're not the most functional spaces, but they do a good job of screening the truck court. So again, you don't see that here. That was really the first change that we made to the site plan. You'll also note on this site plan, the new shape of the driveway for the truck court. We talked about this last time, how this angling of the truck, of the driveway will make it extremely difficult for trucks to turn, leaving the property, to turn left on Bear Hollow. And it will make trucks, if they choose to come down Bear Hollow from the north, if you will, to the south, it'll make it extremely difficult, if not impossible, for them to turn right into the project. Again, trying to do everything we can to keep trucks from going left and north on Bear Hollow. We'll also add, as we've said before, signage there telling trucks that left-hand turns are prohibited. The other, I think, major change you'll see here, it's really hard to see, but there's a curb cut now on Mather, and there's a driveway underneath those trees you see there. In the previous site plan, there was no connection to Mather. So Public Works came up with this idea to move cars, not trucks, but move cars into the project off, using North Mather to try and take additional traffic off of Bear Hollow to further incent cars or direct cars to, to that driveway. The median on Bear Hollow, right by that first curb cut, the median will be extended so that you can't turn left into, into the automobile court right there at the front. So it's a good, it's a good solution to get, to get traffic, as much traffic as possible off of Bear Hollow. We have, you can't see it on this plan, there was a sidewalk planned along the drive aisle that leads into the automobile court. We've removed that. We feel that our tenants, if they're gonna go for a walk, they'll be just as happy to walk out to Bear Hollow and use the sidewalk system there to get up to the bike path. The other thing you'll note, if we just use the top of the page as north, in the southwest corner of the building, there's a notch out there where we formerly had a, like a break area. We've removed that patio and added landscaping there to kind of further soften the building. This is the original elevation. Obviously, you, as you'll see here, the building looks dramatically different from this elevation. You'll also note the original fencing was just that fencing, not a screen wall. We came back to you with a revised elevation, and I'd say it wasn't very well received. You all did not care for the flat parapet line. You'll see that addressed. And Councilmember Sandra in particular said it didn't look enough like an office building. My paraphrase of his words. So sorry for not getting it exactly right. But that was the intent that he expressed at one of the meetings. So we ran with that. And this is the new elevation that we're, elevations that we're presenting to you tonight. The architect has greatly staggered, if you will, the parapet lines of the top of the walls. He has, he has gone to a second-story window system, recognizing there's no second floor, but just a second-story window system, if you will, to give it the appearance of an office building. And you'll see in the truck court as well, there were a few comments about the architecture being applied to all four walls. Previous elevations had a flat, a flat parapet wall for that third elevation you see there. It's called the west elevation. We also had a flat wall on the south elevation. So now we've, we've created that stepped system that, that you all are looking for. And I feel like the, you know, the building design does a good job of creating that kind of office building feel that I think council and staff are looking for. Then the, our architect took that rendering and then took a photograph that, that our photographer took of the site. And you can see that this photograph is taken from the schoolyard. It's looking across the undeveloped lot. In the, in the larger photograph on the right, you'll see the new facility with the solar panels. And I think the, you know, for me, the takeaway here is that because these views, and you're going to see another one in a second, are so distant that really the skyline dominates. These two-story buildings, and I say two stories because they're tall enough to have a second floor if we were to do that. Our neighboring building, as you know, has a second floor. They don't dominate the skyline. They are horizontal in nature. They appear grounded with the horizon. And I just think it's a very telling photograph. Here is another one, taken from the back of the closest home to the subject site. The building is closer and therefore looks a little bit larger. But again, it's the skyline that dominates. I will note that both of these views will be completely obstructed when that vacant lot is developed. Okay, and then coming to a close here. This is the original corner rendering. This is the revised corner rendering that I showed at the beginning of the presentation. Sorry, take that back. This is the second one we presented to you all. This is the final corner rendering right here. Over here on the screen wall, this is, again, the effort is, here is to screen view of the truck court. This is the original, or not the original design, the second design that had a stepped panel system. And those steps are too low to adequately screen your view of trucks. So you can't see it here with the change in the landscaping, but the screen wall system will be flat now. And we had our civil engineer do a sightline study to show that a person standing at the sidewalk will not be able to see the top of a, of a trailer. And then Council, Councilmember Sandra also requested that we extend the screen wall along the back there. I wish I could point, but I think you know what I'm talking about. So you can see the screen wall in sunlight, and then it wraps, and you'll see it in shade right now. And that, that wasn't there before. And the concept is that somebody, you know, walking down Bear Hollow, looking at the project will not be, or driving, will not be looking into the back of the truck court. I think that's a good solution. Landscaping has changed fairly significantly. Here you'll see, in the first submittal, we had a total of 187 trees. And in the current submittal, we have 205 trees. We've also increased the overall diameter of the trees being planted. So if you take the number of trees and the diameter, or the size of each box, rather, you'll see that in the original submittal, it was 5,208. In the current submittal, it's 6,120. So an 18% increase in landscaping. And I promise, I'm getting close to the end here. During the last meeting, there was talk that the project should be considered in the light of zoning and design, design review approval in 2000, 2001, 2002. I was actually developing property for Carl Panatoni, beginning in 1999, and went through quite a few projects with him here in Sacramento and elsewhere. This is not a Carl Panatoni project. This was developed by Buzz Oats. It's in the power-in area. It is in Sacramento County. And you'll see, this building is actually a 32-foot clear building. And I think we're all familiar with these buildings, but you can see that the design has changed significantly over the years. And I don't think anybody wants to go back to this type of building. I know they don't. And, but it was interesting to me that when I looked back at the records for buildings developed at this time, 32-foot clear was actually the standard for new warehouses at that time, which, as you'll note, is what we're proposing for this particular project. Another building, another building. And just for reference, too, this is a recently approved project out at Metro Air Park. I personally like what we're proposing to you tonight better than this building. This building does a good job of, of breaking up the, the parapet line. But the architecture is a little bit flat, I think. And I think our architect has created a much nicer product. And then finally, I said this early on, but these buildings with low clear heights have now become functionally obsolete. This is a building that is also in the power-in area. It's been broken into. It's all boarded up. This building has to be torn down and replaced with something that has a functional clear height and, and many other features that are just lacking in these older buildings. And finally, our, our rendering. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, George. Do we have questions for the applicant? Donald?
I'd like to hear from the public before I ask any questions.
Garrett?
I'd like to hear from the public first.
Siri? David?
Just a comment on that wall extension you were describing in the back. It appears that it would indeed screen trucks for a good portion of that. Yeah, there we go.
Yep.
The only thing that's missing here, obviously, is the development that's currently there with the National Guard on the right, where they've got a parking lot and I think solar structures over the parking.
That is a correct statement.
And sort of minimal landscaping, right? Wouldn't that be, in this particular view, wouldn't that be sort of in the foreground here?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you very much for the, for the presentation. This is a really, you know, difficult project for a lot of people. And I appreciate, I appreciate your sticking with it for these, for these changes, as opposed to some other negative options that could have occurred.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, then we'll open the public hearing.
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes, Siri.
So, go ahead. If the public has a comment and they have a question for the applicant, will we then call the applicant? Or will, after the public comments, the applicant can come and answer the public comments questions?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do it orderly.
Okay.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing and ask if anybody else came to speak to this item.
Yes. So I have nine speaker cards. We will start with James Garcia. Following James, I believe this is Marilyn Metzger. Following Marilyn Metzger will be Jen Larrett.
Okay.
We'll start, start with James.
Hello, I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I'm here to talk about the Logistics Center project. And I have questions and concerns with the whole application process that's taken place. This project came before the City Council for approval back in April 18th of 2022. That was when a lot of our neighbors got together to find out we're having a warehouse being built, along with several other projects. Part of that application process requires an environmental questionnaire to be filled out. And that was gathered by public record request by one of our people. That shows that under penalty of perjury of the law, it was signed by George Condon on 11/21 of 2022. That's seven months after the fact. So this project for being a design review option never should have come forth if all the documentation was not in order. So that's one point I'd like to make. It seems to be an after-the-fact thought. Another is, now there is new rules and regulations. I know our developer agreement states that the city cannot imply anything, impose anything, or the county, since that's who originally formed it. But a state or federal rule can. That would be the code enforcement of building energy efficiency standards that now apply that do require photoballic panels, as well as storage units, beginning January 1st, 2023, that need to be included, including in those apartments that were actually approved on the January 3rd council meeting. It applies to multifamily units as well. So something that seems to be a failing, overwhelming issue is our rules are not being followed. There's been cases of SEQA that has been challenged because of an ERA, EIR, that was outdated. We have new information. We have technical experts in air quality that have presented information regarding that standard in health risks to susceptible sectors such as Navigator School, which is less than a quarter of a mile away from this project, and all of the other projects within the area. So I really have concerns and questions on the legality of this project in its whole. So really hope you look at that. I can give you all the links of all the nice little energy board information there. But that's in play. So this project should not be approved as it's currently designed. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Marilyn? Speaker?
My name is Marilyn Metzger. I live in Stone Creek on Tannen Court. And the first question I have to ask Mr. George, you have a brand-new.
Please address us.
Oh, Class A. Sorry, I just have the question for him. I can't see him. In Roanoke Park, that is only a 24 to 26 clearance height with only six bays.
We're here.
That's relevant. He's just said that that size of a warehouse is not relevant. But I'm going to go to something else. Because for the first time last week, I read the ZSPA. For the first time reading it in its entirety, not looking for something in specific, but looking at the generality. It starts off with the ZSPA intent. Very first paragraph, very first priority laid out. The guidelines and standards, which are lists that follow later in the document, seek to encourage bicycle and pedestrian access between employment, commercial, and residential and public uses. Then goes to the intent objectives. Three out of 10 cover pedestrian and people living, not just working. Then you get to the zoning code of the Sacramento County. It has five items. Two of them have to do with promoting pedestrian access or pedestrian pathways and an efficient use of land. You get to item D in those zones, and it states, "Regulations within ZSPA will not constitute the granting of special privilege or deprivation of property rights." Item E and F are also noteworthy because it says, "ZSPA will provide for a reasonable use of land and not cause undue hardship on property owners." If you go from there down to the design guidelines, the design guideline roles are intended to implement the cumulative goals, objectives, policies of the Sacramento General Plan, the Rancho Cordova General Plan, and the ZSPA Plan. It's a cumulative interpretation. It's not singularly focused. Everything about those developments has to do with community cohesiveness and ensure that a viable community is created. And then you get to project goals. Promote interaction and pedestrian circulation. Establish a system that may reduce dependence on cars and make wide-open spaces accommodating pedestrian activity. I could go on and on and on. I, I encourage anybody, Zoom, otherwise, Tara, read this document. The priority of this entire document is community involvement, local travel, decrease in autos. There is no mention of trucks in here. The word industrial is only used twice.
Please wrap up your comments.
And most of that is in zoning codes. There is nothing mentioned. This was not the heartbeat of the people who wrote this document. This is the special planning area for Zinfandel. This was not the people who wrote this. This was not their dream. This was not their heartbeat, and it certainly isn't ours. And I resent the fact that you're trying to take a community that had a beautiful plan. If you read this.
Thank you, Marilyn.
It's beautiful. But you're not living up to it. You're not enforcing it.
Thank you. Jen?
Following Jen will be Eric Weiniger, and then Giovanni, and Selena Wong.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm actually not here in any kind of official capacity whatsoever. But just as a parent, actually, who has a student at Navigator, I will tell you that as parents of Navigator, we are concerned about the traffic flow on that street, especially since we are getting ready to open soon, hopefully, the building across the street. So there is concerns from parents as far as safety issues. I can appreciate developers', you know, approach to the planning to try to divert as much traffic as possible. But as we just move into this project, if we can just really keep a conscious effort to keep as much of the traffic away from the school as possible, that's already a very difficult in-and-out process at the school to get in there. I've almost hit somebody multiple times as parents who are trying to pull into the school, and we have citizens who are coming around, trying to get into the neighborhoods. It's already a very tight area in that area. So just as we're moving, moving forward, that we're really keeping kids at the top of the priority list as far as like traffic flows and things like that, because there is a level of stress from parents in that location, especially since that building across the street is not open yet. And we don't quite know what the traffic impact's going to be from that building as we move forward with the planning. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Stacy?
Eric Weiniger?
Good evening. Thank you for extending the time for final consideration of the Logistics Center application. To me, it shows that even in the face of multiple threats of litigation for Dermody, you are taking serious heed of the stewardship responsibilities of your position. My main point tonight is this. We have submitted a detailed technical report, and our attorney has submitted her legal discussion. We have a team with an experienced PhD environmental scientist and air quality modeler, and this attorney who will be working with the community groups to address our concerns. My technical aspects focus on the following aspects of air quality and environmental issues. All are centered on the basic concept that new conditions in the community that were not covered in the EIR need to be addressed in order to comply with the spirit and letter of the SEQA law. The argument has been made that since the EIR was certified in 2002, we just pay attention to what the law was then. Doesn't make sense, especially when we're talking about health and safety issues. I remember when doctors used to advertise for cigarettes. Does that mean smoking doesn't kill you? Of course not. A strange logic in the law. It's strange logic in the law to ignore the progress in health standards such as the PM 2.5 ambient air quality standards, which have been updated several times in the last 20-plus years and are due to be updated again later this year, all to lower levels that are shown to be more protective of public health. Diesel exhaust is a key part of PM 2.5, and that is our main concern, especially when a sensitive receptor in elementary school is less than 1,000 feet from the logistics center. And 1,000 feet isn't that much. There's a new law, by the way, that requires monitoring around oil wells within 3,200 feet of schools. And diesel exhaust is way more toxic than oil well fumes. So there is a trend towards lowering things down and increasing distances, buffer zones. And although the 1,000-foot was offered as guidance, I tend to pay attention when the chief law enforcement officer of the state, the District Attorney, DOJ Attorney General suggests something. The facts speak for themselves. Nearly 100 trucks a day for just this site are going to be spewing their exhaust upwind of the school and the rest of the community when they're coming or going to that location. The combination of all the proposed warehouses combined to nearly 1,000 trucks a day and is estimated to increase the amount of diesel exhaust to the community by a factor of two. And all of it is upwind of our homes. So the consequences of this are, one, the risk level from just one warehouse was computed to be 10 times the 10 and 1 million risk level for cancer for a portion of our community. If more warehouses are built, this risk will just spread to wider areas throughout our neighborhood. Please read and consider our submissions that a full environmental assessment is critical to the health and safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Giovanni?
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Giovanni Adelini. I've been a area carpenter since 1997. I'm currently a field rep for Sacramento Carpenters Local 46. I spoke to you last council about labor standards and adopting them for the city. Those consisted of paying area standard carpenter wages, providing healthcare coverage, a commitment to hire local carpenters and apprentices. And just to retouch on the apprenticeship, myself and tens of thousands of other members have benefited from state-approved apprenticeship programs, and our quality of life is better because of it. Apprenticeship programs give those without the opportunity to attend college the ability to acquire skills that lead to good-paying jobs that are proven escalators to the middle class and a shot at the American dream, all without incurring crushing student loan debts they earn while they learn. That being said, this would be a wonderful opportunity to put my members to work and give them an opportunity to work close to where they live. And it would be an opportunity for apprentices to get time in the field to build those skills. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Giovanni. Stacy?
Next speaker is Selena Wong. Following Selena will be Dave Hune. Following Dave will be Greg Mullenberg.
Thank you, Mayor Budge and members of city council. My name is Selena Wong. I am a neighbor of Stone Creek. I live and work in Stone Creek, and I'm here tonight to share my concerns about the health impacts of these developments. I am a pharmacist of over 30 years. My husband is a registered nurse with more than 20 years' experience, especially in helping people with pulmonary diseases and those who require ventilator support. A multitude of studies have established that people who spend more time near trucking operations and freight corridors are exposed to higher levels of, excuse me, diesel exhaust and higher health risks, facts that have been acknowledged by California state agencies and the California American Lung Association. Long-term exposure to microscopic particles in diesel exhaust poses the highest cancer risk of any toxic air pollutant, and 70% of the cancer risk for the average Californian faces that we face is from toxic air pollutants stemming from diesel exhaust. Emissions from warehouse operations contribute to some of the worst air pollution in the United States, and people living within half a mile have higher rates of asthma and heart attacks than other residents in the area. The impact on children is even greater. Their respiratory systems and lungs are still in development, and they're more susceptible to the fine particles that can lead to reduced lung function. Even with the new law starting in 2024 requiring zero emission trucks by 2035, children who start kindergarten at Navigator Elementary in 2024 will have six years of exposure before 2035. When you take the broader view of the logistics warehouse boom in the state of California and across the US, the rapid expansion in Southern California, in Inland Empire, and in other communities in the US disproportionately affect people with low income and people of color. Both groups have health inequities. This should be an important factor in this very diverse community where half of the population are people of color, 11% are people who live in poverty, and 6% do not have health insurance, compared to half that in neighboring Folsom. In locales where warehousing projects are booming, approving entities such as city councils and boards of supervisors acted as if transformation is inevitable, stating that they must look at each project individually rather than evaluate the cumulative impact on the region overall. The dynamic is also changing from neighborhood encroachment to neighborhood takeovers, where housing and schools are being eliminated. And now here they are at our doorstep.
Please wrap up your comments.
We'd like, we should look at what's happened in other regions and learn lessons and find a way forward that does not leave us in the thug of diesel exhaust. And as a healthcare professional, I urge you with urgency to consider the benefit of an updated environmental assessment to review our decisions before. We have long-lasting irreversible impacts that cannot be made aesthetically pleasing through design.
Thank you, Selena.
Next speaker is Dave Hun. Following Dave will be Greg Mylenberg.
Good evening. My name is Dave Hune. I own and operate an engineering company here in Rancho Cordova. And while I'm not affiliated with this particular project, I have been the chief engineer for several logistics centers across Northern California. This is probably the nicest-looking one I've seen, and I'd like to address some of the comments earlier regarding the height. 32 feet makes good, efficient use of land. If you lowered it, you'd have to spread it. Also, that 32-foot mark helps with future use of the building. It may not be a warehouse forever. It might end up being an office building. And that 32-foot height allows for a second story to be built. In addition, with the concerns about traffic and the trucks and things like that, we already have UPS, FedEx, and several others, storage, shipping, et cetera, trucks running through the area. So this isn't going to add much at all to that. And looking at the operations of the logistics centers, they don't have a tremendous amount of trucks going in and out anyway. Rancho Cordova's always been business-friendly. That's one of the great things about this city. And this is a great opportunity to provide jobs, increase tax base, and good use of the property and the location adjacent to the airfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next, Greg.
Following Greg will be Troy Fennell.
I'm Greg Mylenberg, a resident of Stone Creek, honorable mayor of Budge, city council members, city manager, city lawyer. My comments were sent via email by my wife, Sharon, on Saturday, January 14th, with three attached pictures of FedEx 18-wheeler. As she wrote, "I have concerns about the future Stone Creek warehouse buildings next to the Stone Creek community neighborhood that you'll be voting on in the near future, including all commodity development properties." I was sitting on the curb at the end of the Beanaway with my two-year-old grandson. We were watching the airplanes, jets coming in and landing at Mayfair Airfield. Attached are the photos, which you have reserved sent to you, attachment of a FedEx 18-wheeler leaving the Bolden Beauty Warehouse parking lot. I was very dismayed that the truck was not turning left onto Zinfandel from North Mayfair Boulevard. The driver continued straight on Baroque Drive, which is not an authorized heavy truck route. The FedEx 18-wheeler habitually takes Baroque Drive. I just happened to be there to take the attached pictures. I have been attending some of the council meetings regarding the Stone Creek warehouses. There have been promises that 18-wheelers would not use Baroque, not built for heavy trucks, Bear Hollow Drive navigated by the Navigator School, or Spottel Drive near the soccer fields next to the school area. These photos say something different. How will these trucks be controlled to use Zinfandel or North Mayfair Boulevard only? The meeting that night that Dermody was at previously and addressing the council member, Mayor Terry, at the time, asked them if they would drive south on Zinfandel Drive, and there was no hesitation in their response: No. I would hope that you do everything in your power to stop the future warehouses of three to four or more 40-foot tall warehouses for getting built near residential homes, schools, and parks. If not, our beautiful V Spa Rancho Cordova will look like Power Inn Road. There are ways out of this contract, and you have, you know what they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Next speaker is Troy Fennell.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Troy Fennell, resident of Stone Creek. Tonight, I'm referencing an article for public record published by The Guardian on December 29th, 2022. This article is titled "America's Dirty Divide Revealed: How Warehouses Took Over Southern California Like a Slow Death." The article documents the remorse of Southern California residents as their neighborhoods were slowly overrun by logistic warehouses and the negative impact of the cumulative traffic and pollution issues. Just as you are faced with now, the various city councils approved one proposal at a time on each individual project's merit without considering the cumulative impact that multiple logistics center warehouses have on the residents' health and well-being. One of the most prominent and foretelling quotes in the article is this. "In California's Inland Empire, nearly 9,500 warehouses, many near schools clown the air with pollution." While our residential area isn't large enough to hold 9,500 warehouses, the logistics center on Bear Hollow is the exact type of warehouse facility that has been so detrimental to the health of Southern California residents. When you include the total of three projects for seven warehouses being proposed, it is not difficult to see that the cumulative pollution and traffic congestion will easily overtake our residential neighborhoods. In the article, the authors state that the cumulative effects of these warehouses have created some of the worst air pollution in the United States. I don't believe unsafe air quality and traffic congestion is what you or any of the citizens of Rancho Cordova want for our residential areas, schools, parks, and overall well-being. As a resident of Stone Creek, we have a cumulative investment in this area that exceeds Dermody Properties. While they too have rights as property owners here, I am be teaching you on behalf of your resident constituents to continue the process as long as needed to ensure that the warehouses will not be a detrimental health or environmental impact to your citizens, our children, community, and city. In the recent letter submitted by the Dermody attorney, the attorney threatened legal action against the city if their building plans were delayed. In the many interactions I have personally had with this group, I have found their actions to resemble that of a playground bully. It appears to me that Dermody's corporate greed and desire to turn a profit has completely overridden their desire to be a good neighbor. In this letter, the lawyer referred to the concerned citizens as a clamoring mob. Their constant gaslighting and disparaging comments towards our concerns are ever-present. Their attempts to appease us by letting us vote on the trees instead of addressing the valid health and environmental concerns come across as demeaning and demonstrates their lack of concern for our health and well-being. Tonight's meeting is to discuss the major design review of the logistics center that is proposed on Bear Hollow Drive.
Please wrap up your comments.
As a resident of Stone Creek and citizen, I believe that the magnitude of the total proposed design of the 155,000-plus-square-foot warehouse footprint is detrimental to our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to go to Zoom, and I'd like to unmute the caller with telephone number 916-804.
Hello, FISA.
Hi, everyone. This is FISA Mobile in Lincoln Village, and I'd like to share some concerns I have about this project. Aesthetically, I mean, it looks great. I don't care. We're picking out grapes here, but inside, something isn't right. I have major concerns about the impact to the community there. We have seen projects like this trying to be pushed through in Lincoln Village, and I was opposed to it here, where we also are in the highest percentile for asthma and heart disease in the city. And I don't want to happen in Stone Creek the same situations that have happened in the past in Lincoln Village. It is detrimental to health. I am concerned for the children and the community impacts there. Not every development is a good development, especially when it's industrial next to residential. So what are the, what's the trade-off here? You're getting a business, but we're potentially harming the community. And to me, the well-being of the community outweighs everything else. So while the building to me looks great, I just, I couldn't care less. I care more about the impact to the community than you're hearing tonight from your community that they're extremely concerned. I've participated in one of the community sessions, and I voiced there, as well in other sessions when this item has come up, that the SEQA is definitely too outdated. It is not even weighing the concerns that you're hearing from residents today because a lot of the current day conditions didn't exist. We definitely, I feel, are owed a new, up-to-date SEQA. So at minimum, that's what I'd like to see happen. And that's all I'd like to say today. Thank you.
Thank you, FISA.
Next speaker will be Barbara. Barbara, I'm going to unmute you via Zoom, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, this double mute thing gets me sometimes. Thank you. So my name is Barbara, and I'm a longtime resident of Stone Creek. Thank you all, and I know I've spoken a couple of times. And I just wanted to address that anyone who thinks that the warehouse discussion is about light industrial clearly has either not paid attention or has been paid off. I don't think any of us have an issue with light industrial, but our issues are with the actual reality of an Amazon-sized warehouse along with its corresponding traffic, pollution, and safety concerns. I mean, all of us that live here love our community and want the best, or want the best for us, the community, and the citizens that are here. So I beseech you, our dear mayor and city council, please protect your residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Anybody else?
Yes, Gloria, I'm going to go ahead. You're the next speaker. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Budge and council members. My name is Gloria Smith. I am an attorney representing the group Stone Creek Residents for Smart Growth. I emailed Clerk Leitner with my written comments earlier today. This is the first time I have appeared before you, but I have read the file carefully and listened to all of the presentations. I do understand it's staff's and the applicant's positions that review of this project is limited to the city's design review ordinance. However, in this particular circumstance, you are not limited to design review because the underlying planning documents, the 1998 Z Spa EIR and its supplement, are badly out of date, and they simply do not reflect current standards under the Clean Air Act, among other recent state regulations. You must update the Z Spa before approving this project. Warehouses are intensive industrial uses because of the numerous daily diesel truck trips. A substantial increase in diesel truck traffic in any community greatly increases air pollutants such as toxic diesel particulate matter, carbon monoxide, ozone, and other air pollutants that impact local and regional air quality. that impact local and regional air quality. Between 2002 and 2018, the California Air Resources Board and the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District tightened numerous air pollution standards that pertain to diesel trucks. This project must comply with those, and the new requirements have to be reflected in your planning documents for legal consistency. In other words, it doesn't matter that the project might have complied with, or might comply with the 1998 EIR because there is no evidence it complies with all of the new standards and regulations that state agencies have adopted in the last 25 years. I've looked throughout the record, and I found no analysis showing the project would meet clean, renew Clean Air Act requirements. I know I'm nearly out of time, but I do want to point out that my written comments cite to multiple places in SEQA itself, the California Environmental Quality Act, that require agencies to update their EIRs to reflect new environmental standards and regulations. In fact, the applicant has cited to SEQA exemption 15183. That, too, requires agencies to update their EIRs whenever there's any new substantial information showing the existing EIR standards will not meet a proposed project's impacts. This is the case here. The EIR must be updated as part of your approval process, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Anybody else?
I want to let Gloria know that her email was sent to my junk mail and that the attachment is not viewable. I've just sent that to the city council and to the city attorney and to the city clerk's office as well, and it was not sent directly to my inbox, so that had not been distributed yet. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
The city clerk's office also did receive a number of emails, and I'm going to read those emails off. Those have been distributed to the city council today, as well as placed in the back of the room, and are available on the city's website. The first email that was sent for this particular item was Marilyn Metzger sent two emails. Paul Carroll also sent two emails. Kate Carroll sent one email. David and Ferguson sent one email. Eric Weiniger, I believe, might have sent two emails. I think that's two emails. Sharon Mylenberg and Greg Mylenberg, Lisa Phoenix, Brenda Guston sent two emails, and we have James Garcia. Those are all the public comments that I have for this particular item, Mayor Budge.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. And I think the first thing we should do, Adam, you and Darcy might want to address a couple of the questions that have been asked about process. There's a question about process, our own internal process. There's a question about the effect of laws that get passed either before an application is filed or, in some cases, after an application is, is in the review process. And then the last comment from the attorney about any requirements to go back and update all SEQA documents that might have been approved since the beginning of cityhood.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Could I make the suggestion to take a break?
Excuse me. Yeah, I, I think I'd like to speak to the city attorney in light of some of what we just learned.
What?
I'd like to take a recess and, and talk to the city attorney about some, about items that were shared with us that we didn't see before the meeting.
I, I think I'd, I'd suggest we take a, a brief break to organize. Between myself and Darcy, I'm happy to give Mr. Terry a quick call. I, I would note that it doesn't sound like either the developers' council or my office had the opportunity to review the letter that came in, apparently from, from Ms. Smith to the city.
Okay.
But I also, I also would encourage the council to invite the developers' council to respond to, in particular, the SEQA comments that you heard.
Okay.
I think there were, there were also a few comments about the environmental questionnaire that came up, but in particular, I think we will either see if we can address the comments that came in, but we obviously haven't had the, as the clerk said, the opportunity to review the letter, and certainly want to provide some sort of response to it in the record.
Okay, then we're going to do. Okay, so we're going to do, we're going to do two things then, or three things, actually. First of all, we're going to take our five-minute recess, then we're going to hear from Adam and Darcy perhaps, and then we'll ask the Dermity's attorney for any comments that he has about the SEQA. Okay? Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry, if I may, I have printed copies for the city council. I forgot to distribute the comments that the attorney mentioned. I can hand that to you now if you'd like.
Okay, at this point, we're going to ask our attorney, Adam Lindgren, and assisted by the planning director, Darcy Gullart, for responses to the questions that have been asked.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think perhaps we should start with a couple of questions that were asked about the environmental process, the environmental questionnaire, and air quality issues. We haven't given the developer's attorney the opportunity to speak. We do have a, a letter that, as the city clerk explained, the council, neither the council nor, nor our office was, provided that letter because of a technical issue until just a few moments ago. But if with the, the mayor's approval, you might invite the council for the applicant to come up and address some of the SEQA and environmental analysis-related issues that have been raised.
Sure. Do you, do you want me to do that first?
I think it might be helpful.
Okay, let me. Is that Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Art Kuhn, Miller Star Regalia, counsel for the developer. I've just been presented and haven't had a chance to go through entirely an eight-page, single-spaced letter from the attorney who appeared via Zoom. This is what's classically known in SEQA circles as a late hit. It's a, a classic delay tactic to try to string proceedings out even further than they are.
Actually, Mr. Kuhn, we'd probably just rather have information than editorials.
That's from 35 years of experience.
We get it.
I, I'll, I'd like to say about this that what it fails to recognize is what the staff report has recognized is that the process that is going on right now is not a process to approve zoning or a specific plan or a general plan or a land use. This is a design review process. The discretion of the council here is very limited. It's further limited by the development agreement with the developer, and it is not true that anywhere in SEQA is there any provision that an EIR gets stale if it is, if it is over a certain period of time. SEQA provides that if an EIR is certified as correct and complete for a project as it was here for the Z Spa, then that EIR is presumed to be correct if it's not challenged within the time period for challenge, which is a short time period, or if it's challenged and it survives that approval. So here, there is no re opener because an EIR is a certain number of years old or because there is another implementing approval, like a design review approval. There's no reopening of the original SEQA review. What there is, is SEQA has a provision that if there is significant new information relating to a project, but that significant new information relates to substantial or major changes in the project itself from what was originally analyzed in the EIR and that require major revisions to the EIR due to the involvement of new or substantially more severe significant effects than the original project had. Changes in regulation that I'm seeing here being put forth as a basis for new SEQA review aren't. Just because there are new regulatory standards for GHG emissions or for even diesel particulate or air emissions doesn't mean that that's significant new information justifying reopening of an EIR or a new EIR, a subsequent or supplemental EIR. It's not the case. There is case law out there that says the new GHG regulations aren't significant new information because that issue was known since the 70s. And if information was known or could have been known, it was knowable at the time of the EIR was certified here in 2003, as was the case with PM 2.5, which was an issue in the 1990s, as was a case with GHG emissions, which was an issue in the 1970s. There's no significant new information justifying a new EIR or a reopening of the process. So for all of those reasons, and the staff report is in concurrence with this, read the staff report today. It says there is no ability for the council to exercise discretion on the basis of air emissions or related issues because it doesn't have discretion in this process. So even though I think it is unfair that this is dumped on the last minute at the council, I also think there is no merit to it. And I think that you'll be advised of that by your city attorney. Unless you have any more questions, which I'm happy to answer, I think that's all I have to say at this point.
Thank you.
Could I ask, Mr. Kuhn, before you leave?
Of course.
There were comments made about the environmental questionnaire. Can you address those?
I'd like to let Mr. Condon answer that since he filled out the questionnaire and...
Okay, you want to stick around a minute?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Sure, there was a question raised about the handling of the environmental questionnaire by Mr. Garcia. Did you note that?
I saw that email, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so I reviewed that questionnaire again this evening. And if I'm remembering correctly, I made one mistake in misnaming a body of water rather than the channel drainage ditch. I'm not sure what it is that is proximate to the project. I named a different creek. Everything else in that questionnaire that staff sent to me, I believe, is true and correct. I'm going to have Art address the purpose of the questionnaire because that's maybe beyond my abilities.
The purpose of the questionnaire was not to reopen SEQA review on this project in this design review process.
Darcy, do you have any other notes on comments from Mr. Condon or Mr. Kuhms?
I do not. Okay, colleagues, do we have any questions of the attorney? Donald?
No, at this point, without having adequate guidance in closed session from the city attorney, I'm not comfortable talking about this project at all. So at this point, I would suggest that we continue this item and tell our next meeting so that we can have proper guidance and evaluation of what we just heard.
Okay, Garrett's in agreement with that.
I agree.
Siri, do you have any questions of the attorneys?
Not the attorney. I mean, I agree with what Councilmember Donald said, but I did have that question about what Jen mentioned about the traffic away from school. That's the only thing.
Okay, let's hang on to that one.
Okay.
Okay, David, did you have questions for their attorney?
Not for their attorney. I appreciate the statement he just made. The question I have is for our attorney. We basically just sort of, in this meeting, got the threat of litigation. Normal process would say we probably don't respond as a body until we've got a chance to analyze that, and of course, we have not. So the question for Adam is, what is your best advice here going forward? I heard my colleagues request. I would tend to agree with that unless you're going to direct us otherwise.
Sure, I would say, I did hear a number of statements from developers' counsel that I agree with. There isn't anything in SEQA that says that an environmental analysis, a SEQA document, goes stale. It does depend upon the particular circumstances and factors that, in general, were cited. But we have had no opportunity to look at the letter. And it is unfortunate that we didn't get this even an hour, half an hour before the conversation. Again, we are here before the council for design review, which in general is not subject to SEQA review. And so I do need an opportunity to take a look at this letter closely, but I don't think that it would take anything beyond the next conversation, certainly.
Okay. Do you want to comment specifically on laws that have or standards that have been upgraded since the development agreement was adopted?
So in general, we stand by the analysis that's been done so far in the staff report. But again, I think we do need to take a...
I really think we need to let him have a chance to read the note and really analyze it. And so let's just push this agenda item the next two weeks out and come back.
Okay. So we'll entertain that motion.
So moved, I think I already made it.
It needs a second.
Oh, was that the first? Okay, second?
Thank you.
Sorry, apologize.
Okay. Stacy, you want to call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Councilmember Pullapatti.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone. Unfortunately, I guess we'll see you again in two weeks.
I will say, as people are getting up, I don't think in my entire career I've ever been notified of an attorney letter like that while the person's speaking.
Yeah, that is a first. Also wanted to mention, the public comment that we got tonight, a lot of people would characterize any sort of development plan as probably facing NIMBY opposition. And what we heard tonight was sort of the opposite of that, in a way. Very well thought out, solid questions, really, really good public commentary. So I'm very appreciative of that.
We've ended the item. I actually, I'm sorry.
And I've ended my comments.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the public was leaving.
Okay. Okay, so I think we need Public Works. Okay. So now we have Public Works. Okay, so Stacy, would you read our regular calendar item?
Yes.
19.1.
Steve, will you push the...
What do I push?
The item is residential waste collection and street sweeping contract options for the term beginning January 1st, 2025.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Budge, members of the council. I'm Steve Harriman with the Department of Public Works. I'm here tonight to have a conversation about our residential solid waste contract.
Actually, Steve, I want to preface your comments with the, since we have a lot of people who've stayed, we probably all need to remember that this was one of the really important items in incorporation and for interesting reasons, it was very pivotal in encouraging people to incorporate. We actually heard from the City of Citrus Heights, from their, not their city manager, but the lady who was their chief financial officer at the time. And it was one of the things that everybody in all of the public meetings we had around at the different schools really enjoyed hearing about. But the unique thing is that we've had the same contractor for our entire 20-year existence. So I've got three colleagues who've never really reviewed this before, and we're all looking forward to hearing your thoughts.
And Mayor Budge, you recall in 2004, we actually did a joint procurement process with Citrus Heights. And so we put out one procurement document back then, way back in the day. So by way of introduction, our current contract for residential waste collection and street sweeping expires on December 34th of 2024. And it seems like a long time away from now, but really, now is the time to determine how we're going to go about executing a new contract for the term beginning January 1 of '25. So the purpose of the item tonight is to present the options and to have feedback from council. So by way of history, we issued an RFP in early 2004 for residential waste collection and recycling services. As a result of that RFP, we received two proposals, one from Sacramento County and one from, what was in those days, Brownus Fairing Industries, BFI, which of course now is Republic. The city council approved the selection of BFI on July 19th, 2004. The original contract term was February 1 of 2005 through 2012. That original contract was extended in September of 2011, which extended the term through 2017. And then the second contract extension was approved by council in June of 2017. And that's the term that we're in currently. And that contract expires at the end of '24. This is a summary of the programs that are currently provided by Republic Services. And I don't need to go through and read every one of these individually, but it's a very comprehensive set of programs. A couple that I would point out, one I think is the bulky item program. We offer our residents three appointments per year at up to 10 cubic yards each. That was an important program back in 2004. The city council was very adamant that we have a way for people to get rid of their junk and debris. And to this day, I think that program is the most generous program in our county. And it's used extensively. It's a fantastic program. The other one is this contract includes the provision of waste and recycling services for city facilities and city events, so things like the Fourth of July, for example. The waste services and porta potty services are provided through this contract at no additional cost to the city, which is fantastic. This is a summary of, continued of, summary of the current contract. We are currently at about $7.5 million in annual billings billed by Republic to our residents. They pay almost $700,000 a year back to the city in franchise fees. The current contract includes a $450,000 annual payment to the city that we use for road rehabilitation projects. We get a $4,000 annual payment to the city for our shopping cart program. That was another one from 2004, the original shopping cart program. Also, Republic refunded the city about $100,000 after the current contract was executed to cover staff and consultant costs that were incurred during the negotiations. Republic either provides a full-time recycling coordinator or a $50,000 annual payment to the city. We get 2,000 cubic yards per year of illegal dumping, which again is a very important program for our city. And Republic has been very responsive in working closely with us on that program. We have new compressed natural gas vehicles. And then finally, our garbage is sent to disposal at Forward Landfill, which is about a 140-mile round trip from Rancho Cordova. Our recyclables go to Newby Island, which is about a 250-mile round trip. And our organics are sent to a variety of different facilities, but outside of Sacramento County. This is a summary of all of our collections in 2021. And again, I won't read each of those individually. A couple that I find are extraordinary. I love that we are recycling 3,300 gallons of used oil at the curb. We have very active participation in that program. We also, that year, had 4,000 tons of bulky items picked up and over 27,000 appointments made by our residents, which is fantastic. Finally, the bottom line there shows a 42.3% diversion rate. And basically, what that means, of all the material that Republic handled, 42.3% of it did not go to landfill. It was recovered for recycling. The contract includes a 40% minimum, and they exceeded that at 42.3%. This is just a graph showing the regional rate comparison. So this is for a 64-gallon trash cart, which about 2/3 of our customers have a 64-gallon trash cart. And the rate includes all of the services. So it's garbage, recycling, organics, the bulky item program, street sweeping, public education, customer service and billing, the whole thing. So we are currently at $32.49, which I think regionally compares very favorably. The average for our region is $35.92. So we're looking quite favorable with our rates. So we basically have two options for going forward for a new contract that we would begin on January 1st of 2025. We could set about and do a competitive RFP process. And this would allow multiple companies to compete for a new contract. The second option is that we could do a 90-day negotiation with Republic, and then we could return to council with a term sheet. And we would present that term sheet to council. And council would then have a choice that we could either execute an extension to the current contract based upon those negotiated terms or council could direct us to go out to a competitive bid. So there's some pros and cons with each of these options. The first option here is competitive procurement. And I think one of the main pros of a competitive procurement is that really competition, I would say, ensures the best services at the best price for city ratepayers. And I want to, you know, these are large contracts. If we did a seven-year term, which is what the current one is, this contract value would exceed $50 million. So competition is an important element. It provides the ability for us to really evaluate different options, like potentially looking at local disposal and processing or other enhancements to our programs. The next one is a very important point. We are not bound by the low bid. This is not a bid process, this is a proposal process. So the council, actually, through an RFP process, has a great deal of flexibility in terms of what you would want to do through that process. So even if we had a proposal that was lower, but we didn't like other parts of it, the council has the option to select the most favorable proposal presented to the city. I think we are in a very competitive marketplace now. I don't know for sure, but I think... I, I, I don't know for sure, but I think something in the range of two to four proposals is, is likely if we were to issue an RFP for this. And then finally, the successful proposer would again reimburse the city for our staff and consultant costs for that process. The cons of a competitive procurement are that it is a, is a very long process. And especially if we did a procurement, we did an RFP process, and we decided to choose a different service provider, then we are looking at a transition of service providers. And so the combination of the proposal, proposal process and transition, I'd say is easily a two-year process. And haul or transition can be difficult. Those, Mayor Bud, you will recall, the last time we did it in 2005, we did have some hiccups. It was a challenge. But basically, the billing system would need to be transferred. Potentially, we would exchange carts, maybe put new carts on the ground. Very likely to have new cut, new employees unfamiliar with Rancho Cordova. And then also, there are certainly supply chain issues that may cause a delay in acquiring new equipment. And so we talk about, for example, buying new garbage trucks. It's not, the garbage trucks are not sitting on the lot. They're built to, as a custom order, and supply chain is definitely a challenge. And then finally, you know, the con is if we did have a new partner, they would be an unknown city partner. And, you know, Republic has been a fantastic city partner for, for many years. So the second option would be then to do a 90-day negotiation with Republic and then come back to council and present those terms. This would allow us to sit down for 90 days and, and come up with a term sheet for the term starting January 1 of 2025. And again, this provides council with great flexibility because at the end of 90 days, we could either execute a contract based upon those negotiated terms or issue an RFP for a competitive process. And finally, you know, we, we have done two contract negotiations thus far with Republic. We did one in 2011. We did one in 2017. And I think that the, the outcome of both of those negotiation processes was very successful. The cons of this 90-day negotiation is that if we get through the 90 days and then council says, well, we really would like you actually now to issue an RFP, it, it does shorten our time. It makes the, the schedule even a little tighter. And then also, you know, it might eliminate the opportunity for other waste companies to participate in a competitive process. And so, this is a schedule showing, this, this is the schedule where if council were to direct us to negotiate for 90 days, we came back, council said, no, we don't like this term sheet. Please put it out to bid, put out an RFP. So this is sort of the worst-case scenario. But this would show that, you know, so January through April of this year, we would negotiate with, with Republic, and we would come back to council. May through July, we would do a resident engagement process. We would probably do some, some town hall meetings and some surveys to find out how people felt about their service package and things that they might like to see provided. And we would have the, an RFP drafted and released during that time period. The proposals would likely be due back to the city in September of '23. In October, we would have an evaluation committee that, and that may include doing site visits, interviews, reference checks, background research. A lot of work goes into that. We would want to get back to council in November to approve the contract. And then the month of December, we would, we would finalize that contract and execute it. So if we have a contract executed by December of '23, then that gives us one full year to, to work on transition issues. And on January 1 of 2025, the new contract would begin. So this is a question that we get a lot, is why does it take a year? You know, if we want to potentially hire a new company? And so again, the purchase and delivery of new trucks. If we had a new service provider, they may need to purchase and expand, expand an existing corp yard. They would certainly need to hire and train employees, establish the billing system and customer service systems. We would want to do a robust public education on the new company potentially. We may want to purchase and deliver new carts. And that will be certainly a, a subject of conversation as we proceed on this process. And they may need, may need to redo the design route. So, so a year, you know, once we have a contract executed, again, seems like a long time, but when we look at this list, is actually a lot to do in a 12-month period. So, so that concludes my presentation. As I said, we kind of have two options here, and we're anxious to have some conversation.
Thank you. Actually, just a funny anecdote. When we did this 20 years ago, or 19 years ago, the carts came from all over. Mine said Phoenix. Actually, it said property of the city of Phoenix.
Got those discount carts from Phoenix. Thanks, Republic.
Okay, so, and actually, you skipped over one of the really great services, which is street sweeping. That is something that we absolutely picked up that nobody in Sacramento County had ever seen with any regularity before. So. Okay, let's ask if anybody has questions, and we'll go around, start with Donald.
I don't have any questions. I'd be interested if there are any public comments before I made any comments about this issue.
Okay. Garrett, do you have any questions for Steve?
How do we get rid of the small containers of smelliness that are now in my house? I'm sorry, I apologize. That was me.
That means you're using it. I'm, that's good.
Yeah, and everyone's happy about the garbage smell.
Garrett, no, you put, you get a little bitty thing like this from the grocery store, and you stick it in the bottom of the pail. And you don't leave the pail all week long because you may get maggots, which unfortunately I know about.
That's the answer. And it's don't wait all week. Empty it more than once a week.
That's what I said.
I thought it was a mulching pot for inside. What do you do with that stupid, yay, government?
I just tie the bag up and put it in the trash can. Siri, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I put newspapers at the bottom of mine, so every day I just pack it up and put it in. I had a question. You had a diversion rate of 40%. Is that for the bulk pickup?
That represents everything that we collect. So, so garbage, recycling, organics, bulky items, and, and actually even illegally, illegally dumped material as well. So they, our contract requires that 40% of all that material in its entirety not go to the landfill. It must be diverted.
So I had another question, and I asked this last time too. So there's some perfectly good items that are left in that bulk pickup. Is there any way you could recycle that before it goes and gets crushed in the?
You know, probably not in, in an easy way. A lot of the good stuff is actually removed from piles before Republic gets to it. There, there's a fair.
Apparently illegal to do that, right?
There is a fair amount of that that happens.
Throughout the community, you put a bulk pile out, 50% of it is gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually, I had to call them back one day when, because I, I put out one something or other. I, I think it was like an old printer, and I put it out, and it was gone the next morning.
I want to thank you for my new printer.
And I said, I called the office and I said, don't bother to come by because it's not there anymore.
Yeah. So that material is, is taken to a facility that segregates the recyclable materials. And I, I suppose if there was something in there that was truly recoverable, would they, where's Anna, would they recover it in some cases?
Yeah, and they actually, the facility that we take the bulky waste to actually has a recovery rate that fluctuates every quarter around 75%.
So a very. Okay, so we'll, we'll give them an opportunity to, to come up and, and talk, and they can expand on that some.
The, the last one I had, so just on that, would you be able to do a map of bulk pickup so they can actually get picked up, all the good stuff? I'm really against sustainability here, if you have not noticed.
I would probably prefer not to do that. It does actually make people nervous when people are going through their pile. What I would prefer to do is to promote reuse and donations so that people weren't actually putting that good stuff out for pickup in the first place. That might be the better approach.
That would be a good campaign.
Yeah, it would. But if you've gone to any of the donation stores, that, you know, only the good, good stuff is used. The rest of it is trashed, even when you donate. So like 80% of the stuff you donate is trashed.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
David, did you have questions?
That was an interesting little exchange right there. I had a Caltrans employee, employee tell me not long ago, there's such a thing as shopping by the highway, which is, you know, you're driving down, you're looking to see what's falling off, and you stop and pick it up. I guess there's also shopping by bulk waste. But, you know, one, one question I had, I'd certainly agree, the street sweeping is, is really valuable. But we have some streets that are chronically bad. They tend to be around apartments. They tend to have a lot of litter and stuff on them. They tend to have cars that are there a lot, and so it's much harder to sweep. And so Steve, I guess one of the things I'd be looking for is, you know, are there places we could designate for a more thorough cleanup? Or perhaps even a different kind of cleanup to deal with those issues? Because the, the result is, you know, in these chronic places, things just look messy all the time. I mean, even after it's been swept, it still looks messy. And we, we need to find a way as a community to get around that. We have ordinances out there that say apartment owners must clean up the, the litter and trash that's on their property, ends up getting blown into the street. That happens sometimes. It's hard to, hard to stay on top of that enforcement-wise. So is there a cleanup method here that would, that would work better?
You know, there, there's, there's a few options. We did an experiment last spring on Mills Tower, and we actually had the people move their, their cars out of the way, and we did a cleanup. And, you know, those gutters had not probably been swept in many years, honestly, because of the cars that are parking. There is not a really easy solution. I mean, the, you know, certain parts of the city of Sacramento, for example, have no parking on certain days of the week, which requires a lot of signage and enforcement and education and those kinds of things. There's certainly options that we can talk about and, and think about that, that we could look at. But I agree, in certain parts of the city, it's difficult where parking, we have, you know, multifamily properties that were built on day one without enough parking, right? And so that, and that really is, it is a challenge.
They have constant parking or car storage even in the streets. It's almost like you'd have to send somebody out there with a leaf blower to get the litter into the middle of the street so that it can be swept, right? You know?
And we haven't done that, actually. We have, in a lot of those areas, we do use a leaf blower. We've also had situations in the past where we've coordinated with the street sweeper. So we use a leaf blower to, to clean out under the trees and then, under the cars, rather. And then the sweeper comes down the street and clean to the middle. But it is a difficult situation, and there, there are no easy answers to that problem.
You know where else we have that kind of problem, though? If you have a house that's got five bedrooms and you potentially have a house full of grownups or teenage kids or whatever, then you don't have enough parking, even if people are parking in the garage, so that we, we end up with a lot of cars on the street just because there's more cars than there are drivers.
Yeah, that's exactly right. That's exactly right.
You know, we have not gone out to bid since the original award of, of the contract. And frankly, I don't have any issues with our current contractor. I just wish there was a hybrid option where you could work with them and go out to bid. But I, I suppose, you know, if we did the 90-day study and the new rate came back and it was no longer low or the services weren't what we wanted, we could at that point go out to bid. I guess that's the closest to a hybrid that I could see.
Well, that, well, I, I was hoping to say my comments until, or until we heard from, from the public, but.
Okay, but.
Isn't that what we did was option two? I, I did have a question for staff as a follow-up to what David just asked too, though, that I wanted to ask. That's okay, but.
Do you want to explain option two?
Yeah.
No, no, I had, no, I had a question. As a follow-up to what David just said about street sweeping in more chronically troubled, challenged neighborhoods. Steve, can you, can you explain to me how the contract works right now with, I want to say it was, oh, I'm trying to think, south of Folsom, north of Highway 50, Court of Meadows, I guess? It was the one that I think I remember where we, we repaved and we fixed a bunch of sidewalks. And then we had, I want to say a couple of different, they were bulky item days for the whole neighborhood where volunteers came over. I remember like 20 football players at high school came and, and, and they picked up old appliances and all kinds of other stuff. Is that built into the contract that they would do that? Because I, I think to David's point, that, to, to me, that was a really effective day. They ended it with volunteers getting like a barbecue that was all paid for, I think, by Republic. But, you know, we had 50 to 75 people out there picking up fridges and putting them on trucks and washing machines and car parts and all kinds of stuff.
We think you're talking about White Rock.
Yeah, yes, it was. But there, there were two or three. It was, it was Court of Meadows, and then it was further in. But, but we, as far as I remember, we, we were doing that two or three times a year before COVID, right?
Correct. Yeah, that is actually part of the contract. And so those have been Saturday events, and they're very successful. So we basically deliver education material to a, you know, finite amount of the neighborhood. We pick up, in the past, we've done, you know, garbage and debris, appliances and e-waste. And we've had a great success having volunteers come out, and they have a blast because they get to, you know, throw stuff into the rear loader, into the garbage truck. But we had a lot of participation from the neighborhoods. You know, our, what's interesting about that, our current program is on-call, meaning people can call anytime and make an appointment. But if you leave them a postcard and you say, we're going to be there on Saturday, man, they get after it, right? And a lot of people participate if they have a date certain that, you know, we're going to be there on that day. So Republic has been a great partner in those projects, and they've been very successful. I think that during the pandemic, we, we did slow down on those, but they are included in our contract.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, it would, it'd be great, I think, to David's point, to probably see something like that expand and maybe have, again, I know we already coordinate with Public Works around sidewalk improvements or Measure H projects and things like that. But a way to see those even more coordinated and, and more strategically selected might be great.
So did you anticipate Republic would have something to say?
I presume that they would.
Okay, so let's give Republic an opportunity.
For the record, we were on for public comment as well.
Okay.
I'm Tony Perez, general manager with Republic Services. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. So first of all, I'd like to thank the city of Rancho Cordova for this great opportunity to continue to serve the community and for the involvement here over the 19 years. Over the last year, we were grateful enough to successfully complete over 40 events within the city of Rancho Cordova. Some of these events were in conjunction with some of our business partners that we love. To mention one, it's Rebuild Together Sacramento, where we are able to help out and continue to support the community for those in need. I'm also grateful to report on how, over the years, our team continues with our commitment to serve within the communities and sometimes even through our employees. So I'd like to also express how, how proud I am of the team of being resilient, being very flexible through the pandemic, any weather situation, and just over the years for the resiliency that the team has to come out and handle business. During the pandemic in early 2020, we were grateful enough to provide meals to our employees for, twice a week, once for lunch and once to bring home to their loved ones. We did utilize local restaurants and through the municipal team and staff recommendations, we were able to partner with Fuh Fresh, Cattle Mints, JJ Feister Industries, to name a few. The latter also supported our needs and our cause in providing hand sanitizers for each of our drivers within the work trucks. Our dedication to work to serve the community allows us to show the gratitude through our employees while supporting the rec, local businesses and restaurants. Furthermore, we've been able to continue to expand our dedicated-to-serve initiatives. Initially, started out with a $100 gift cards for our employees. It is now to $500 a year. Our expectation and our request is that they come out and they shop local, that they give back to the communities which we work, live, and play in. We are committed to serving you by collecting and processing solid waste, recycling, not even organics. And during any difficult time, we are here to handle business and take care of the community. It would be my wish, as your business partner and provider, that we continue to do so for the next 20 years and beyond. And in commemoration of Martin Luther King, I do want to share a quote. Everybody can be great because everybody can serve. So with that, we do understand you have a difficult decision to make, and we do respect your decision. I do have our municipal sales manager, Anna Rulon, standing next to me in the event you have some questions that I may, myself, may not be able to answer.
Thank you, Tony. Colleagues, do we have questions? Donald, do you have questions?
Not at this time. Nope. Thank you, Tony.
Garrett? Siri? David?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I see we have some public comment.
We do. Tony was.
Tony was one of those who submitted a speaker card, so I will move on to Helen Waylon-Bachot.
Okay, Helen?
I would like to say, I am very pleased with Republic's service. They do, when you call them, they're very prompt. The only issue I do have is on Rod Bodre on recycle day, I pick the trash up and it leaves. I've also been involved with FISA and with Angel, doing this cleanup of streets that are not being cleaned. You might have to go to something that San Francisco does, where limits when you can park on certain streets at the time of the month where the street sweepers come. Because we pull out bags and bags of crap, and they're by the apartments. Maybe the city needs to reestablish what rules and regulations fall with these apartments, because the parking that is required under law is not sufficient for the number of people who actually live in these apartments. So therefore, you have all these, these cars parked on the street, and Republic can't get to it. Another pet peeve I have is when we put the protected bicycle lane down on Rod Bodre, we were assured that it wasn't going to cost any more money, that they had a street sweeper that could take care of it all. Well, I guess it's twice a month now, or whatever, I see the guy with his leaf blower go up and down Rod Bodre. I called Republic, I called the city because I have solar panels and they're down low. I'm tired of, of all the junk that, dust and stuff that gets put on my solar panels. So I suggest that maybe I'll start sending the cleaning bill to the City of Rancho Cordova. Needless to say, the guy does not go near my house, he stops before my house and after, because my panels are not that high. Another issue is, he walks from where the protected bicycle lane ends, clear down to the gates of the park, blowing the street. That's not cost-effective, that's not needed. One issue I do have about Republic is, the street sweeper used to go down on what Rancho Cordova owns, which is from my house to the gates of Riverbend Park, and clean the streets. They no longer do that. So we have a guy who walks and blows leaves. Another pet peeve I have about leaf blowing is the 2540 Rod Bodre, the gated community, gated house that used to be the Papas', and now is owned by Mark Berry. There's a group of rocks that I put in to enhance the neighborhood. That street sweeper with his blower blows the leaves on top of those rocks. Needless to say, I'm going to have to go over and clean them up. So I have a real pet peeve about gas blowers. They blow, even the, the gardeners blow the stuff out into the street, and it shows up in other people's responsibility. So that's the only pet peeve I have about, with Republic. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. A lot of us are not fan of, fans of leaf blowers. Anybody else?
Next speaker is Dave Sikic.
Oh, Dave, hello.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's good to see you all. It's been quite a while since I've, since I've been here at the podium, so, but I felt like we should hear from another caller tonight, seems appropriate. Atlas Disposal has been serving your business community for waste and recycling needs for the past 20 years, since incorporation and even before that. We're celebrating our 25th anniversary this year in serving the greater Sacramento area. We also have operations in Phoenix, Arizona, and Salt Lake City, Utah. We very much appreciate the relationship that we have with the city. Your staff is phenomenal, we really very much enjoy the working relationship and want to see that continue. As a local independent, who also has our corporate office here in Rancho Cordova, we would love to see this contract go out to bid. We understand it's a tough decision. You know, I was here 20 years ago personally, when the award was given to Republic, back then Jerry Mayberry, I know many of you remember that, I was here during the first contract negotiation where it was extended. I'm not sure if I was here for the third one, but I'm here tonight. And again, we would love to see it go out. That being said, we would respect whatever decision you make, we know it's tough to turn over vendors that you've had a long-term relationship with, and we hope to continue a strong relationship either way with the city.
Thank you, Dave. Congratulations on the 25 years.
Thank you.
We have a speaker in Zoom, Jennifer Garcia. Jennifer, I've unmuted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you, City Council. I have no problem with the service, except for one thing. My one issue is when they come to blow and clean up the shrubbery, I'm off Baroque Drive, I back up to it, that they blow the leaves over the fence instead of actually cleaning them up. So any of the trees, the shrubbery, things that were on the other side, that was the city's issue to clean up, gets blown over our fence all the time, and we actually have a pool right there, and you can tell whenever they have come by, because all of a sudden we have 10,000 leaves and other things that get blown over our fence. So that is my biggest issue, they do a great job, I think, with some of the other services they provide, but that is my biggest issue. Thank you.
Jennifer, where did you say you live?
I'm off Baroque, or I back up to Baroque, I'm in the Stone Creek area.
Oh, okay.
I'm in the horseshoe of Baroque.
Some of that may be Park District. Yeah.
Okay.
It's the, it's the Park District's landscape gardeners.
Okay.
Chat with the Park District about that one.
I will call the Park District then, thank you, Linda.
You bet. Thanks. Anybody else?
Mayor Budge, that's all the public comment that I have for this item.
Okay, great. So, colleagues, thoughts about the two options? Donald?
Yeah, as much as I've, I've really enjoyed working with Republic, I said it five years ago or so, when we did this the last time, that when this came up again, I was going to request to have it go out for bid. 20 years seems like a long time to not see what the market would, would offer. You know, I, I think Republic is going to continue to be very competitive, and it'd be, it'd be a very difficult change to do that, but I just think that at this point, that's just too long to not at least see what the market would offer. And, and that's pretty much what I said five years ago.
Okay. Garrett?
Definitely go out and do the three-bid thing, or the five-bid thing, it's just, you want it above board. They'll probably, they're just, they, you know, they're a great asset to the community.
Siri, you're in for option one?
Yeah.
Also.
Yeah.
Okay. Siri?
I am actually pretty happy with Republic Services. I, I like, as a resident, I've not had any issues, I've not heard any complaints against Republic Services. Given this time of the year where we're seeing a lot of, a lot of people are having a hard time to hire and train new employees, there are a lot of supply chain issues, and this which will cause delays, and causing delays with the garbage is not something I want to play around. That said, I know garbage truck man is a dream job for a lot of kids, but still, I don't know how many applicants you'll get, you know, in that regard, so, based on all of that, I'm going for option two.
Option two. Okay, negotiating with Republic. David?
Uh, I think I'm leaning towards option one. It's been, it's been 20 years. I really encourage, you know, our current provider to, so be a part of that process. I'm sure they will, they will have a distinct advantage in that process, but I think it's worth doing option one.
Okay. So, we're going to be a split vote on this, Steve? Because I definitely agree with Siri on the 90-day, 90-day negotiation with Republic. I think the thing, one of the things we don't want to lose sight of is the fact that we have this perfectly wonderful list of all the different ways in which Republic serves this community. Year, page, four, the current agreement summary, and those things didn't come about overnight. We started with pretty much one set of, a finite set of advantages, programs from Republic, and then as time went on, then a variety of other things got added in. So, um, just, you know, we didn't start with this whole list. Things were added along the way as they saw a need and figured out that they could help with that need, and, um, my only, my only request for Republic is, I think it was, as Helen says, the current setup with the trucks, there's a couple of, a couple of ways in which the lighter products can float out of the truck, or not make it from the, the big bin in the front up to the back of the truck, and that needs to be worked on, that's an equipment thing. But, um, since we have a predominance of council members who want to go out to bid, I guess that's what we're going to do.
And, so are, are, we're going to do a 90-day, or we're not going to do the 90-day? Those are sort of, we can either proceed, option one is that we would just basically begin right away on a competitive procurement process.
Right.
Option two is we would negotiate for 90 days, come back with a term sheet, and let council decide which, you know, and at the end of 90 days, we could either execute a contract based on those terms, or put it out to bid.
Okay, so unless the three guys want to change based on what Steve just said, we probably need a motion for which option we want to pursue? So the hybrid, Steve's hybrid recommendation is to negotiate for 90 days, see what the results are, and then go out to bid if necessary.
Well, and if I may, real quick, Mayor, this is, you know, kind of a, the two options that were presented, and I think there's a couple of things, one is, whoever the council decides to go as far as the, the two options, and it does sound like there was kind of a three to two, three for, for number one, going to bid, and two, going for the hybrid. But I think regardless, no matter what happens with this process, Republic, I'm sure, will still be part of the process moving forward, and all of the benefits that you've seen, and all the list of things will, I'm sure, be part of the RFP package that goes out as far as what our expectations are from a, from a contracting standpoint. So I think with that, it would be great if we could get some, a motion or something for the direction.
So somebody want to move option one or option two?
I move option one.
I move option one. Always. You take so much time in moving the mic around, he's like, getting up and adjusting his tie.
We need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
I don't want to be second.
Stacy, call the roll, please.
Just my tie.
Councilmember, Gatewood.
I abstain. No. Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Oh, sorry.
You're not Sander.
Sorry. I, I am sorry. This is, I, I approve option one, right?
Yes, that's what you moved to.
Okay, sorry, I, I don't, mine is deny.
Siri, you just.
I know I did.
You can't do that, you can't do that.
David, you need to vote.
Aye.
Mayor Budge? No.
Mine's no.
So we have three ayes and two noes. So that's direction.
Very confusing direction, but it's been moved. Thank you, Siri, nice job. Knocking it out of the park.
Thank you, I should have let you adjust your tie.
Thank you, Steve.
We got that?
We did get that. We got that. Thank you, Dave, and thank you, Tony and staff, we appreciate you all being here. So with that, we have come to the end of our agenda, and we're going to ask if there are any requests for future agenda items. Hearing none, we're adjourned. See you all in two weeks.